Evening and welcome to the Holliston School Committee Thursday, January 21st, 2020 School Committee Meeting. It is 7:03. I'm calling this meeting to order pursuant to the Governor's Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's Emergency Order dated March 16th, 2020, the Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance of the Governor's Emergency Action Requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I ask that all participants remotely attending please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, a roll call attendance will be taken. Mrs. Listevnik?
Present.
Mr. Morton?
Present.
Dr. Savard?
Present.
Ms. Koshin?
Present.
Ms. Naborski?
Present.
Mrs. Raffey? Present. And Ms. Hanstead is absent. Six, seven, okay. And our students, our student reps are also not participating this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve virtual meeting participation.
Move by Cynthia?
Second by Dawn. By Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. All in favor, roll call vote. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Ms. Hanstead? I mean, oh my God, Dawn, I'm so sorry. Ms. Naborski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Raffey, yes. Sorry.
Absent. That's a true roll call vote, by the way.
Oh, okay. There we go. Absent. Okay. We will dive right into our communications. Our students are not here this evening. Does anyone from the committee have anything they want to share? Dawn?
Just very quickly, I wanted to say congratulations to Brendan Geary, a Holliston High School graduate, former hockey captain. He's now a freshman at Fordham, and he won the Bruins MIAA Sportsmanship Award. And that was for the 2019 to 2020 high school season. That was just announced this, this last Tuesday, January 12th. So congratulations, Brendan. And also, finals are coming up for our high school students, February 2nd and 4th, and then they move on to the next term. So, and thank you very much to all of our teachers and staff, especially as our, our students navigated through a very tumultuous January, including the riots of January 6th, the inauguration, all of the recent events. It's been, as, as a parent of five students, it's great to hear about the conversations that are have, that are going on in the classroom and how they tie into what they're learning today. So, thank you.
You?
I second that, Dawn. I'm really appreciative of all the, the teachers who have taken the time to talk with our students about what's been going on nationally. And, and just if anybody saw the inauguration, I hope many of you did. I just wanted to just call attention to this amazing youth poet laureate, Amanda Gorman. If you did not see her recite her poem, it's absolutely awe-inspiring, and I encourage you to look her up on YouTube and watch it. And it's, it just gives you so much hope for like what our future, like she's generation-wise Maya Angelou, and I just was so struck by her. And I feel like for someone who overcame so much, I mean, she had learning disabilities and a speech impediment, and with the support and encouragement of her family and her community, she's been able to get where she is, and it's just very impressive. So, just to show you where you can go. That's all.
Anyone else? Okay. Keith? Do you have anything? Peter?
Yeah, we had two students who earned spots on the National Association for Music Education, All Eastern Honors Band and Chorus. It was Izzy Shook, who was a soprano in the chorus, and Matt Perre, a trumpet in the band. So, they qualified, you know, over, you know, kids throughout the East Coast and are recognized as being some of the top musicians in the nation. So, congratulations to the two of them and to Sean Delago and Max Efrard, in particular for their, you know, support and educating them and inspiring them to do this awesome work. That's it.
Sounds great. Thank you. Congratulations. Susan?
Well, I was going to mention that, but Peter's right. That was wonderful news to hear, and I'm going to share that out with parents again tomorrow, the end of the week. But I also, a little bird told me that we have a 20-year veteran leader in our district, and that is Keith Boudet has been a business manager for 20 years, and he's hiding now. But I want to acknowledge the amazing job he's done in the district and for many years to come. But what an accomplishment. And he's been, I've only been here a short time, but he's been the go-to person and a staple for the district for so many years. And congratulations, Keith.
Congrats, Keith. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Keith. And Kelly and Dan, you're both here from Central Office. Do you have anything to add just for public comment? We don't typically have all of you here, but you're here. So, do you have anything you want to share? All right. Great. Thank you. And we don't have anyone registered for public comment. So, we're going to jump right in. Kelly, you are first up. So, Kelly Kemp is the Student Services Director for the District, and she is going to give us a special education update.
Yep, I just wanted to kind of let people know some of the things that we've been working on this fall and this winter. Is it possible for me to share my screen?
Yes, Keith is the host. He'll give you that permission.
All right. So, um, just. So, like I said, I just wanted to give a brief update on some of the things that we have been working on this past fall. And then just a brief indication where our data stands relative to special education here in the district. I did put some numbers up here just indicating that essentially our, our numbers have stayed relatively stable. The number of students in the district receiving special education services is still at 17%, of our total population, 489. That is right in line with, with pretty much the statewide percentage across the districts. Currently, we have about 29 students in our accessing services through our basis classroom and 26 students through our network continuum, and then 36 students across the district who are accessing services to our social emotional support classroom. Currently, just relative to our, our model, we have 147 students, special education students, who are receiving their instruction full in person. So, not a hybrid model for them, but right now, they're coming in every single day and receiving their services in person. We have 94 students, special ed students, who are currently fully remote. And then other students who receive special types of services. We have 188 students on 504 plans, and we actually have 59 students who are receiving English Language Learner Services. We actually have 64 ELL students in the district, but five have opted out, which means that 59 are having, having direct services. I did break our disabilities down by category, just so folks can see. The largest, the largest number of students in a particular category is that 23.9%, that dark blue category, which is specific learning disabilities. Those are students who have specific challenges in reading and writing or in math, and they've been identified through that team meeting process as having a specific learning disability or an SLD. Most of the time when students are identified with an SLD, we categorize what area they have that specific learning disability in. Like I said, it could be reading, but that could be broken down further into like reading comprehension versus decoding, that type of thing. The second largest category is actually health, and that's at 15.9%. That category is large because it encompasses all of our students who actually have a diagnosis of Attention Deficit Hyperactivity Disorder or ADHD. That's what comprises the bulk of that 15.9%. The third category is actually tied between students who have an identified emotional disability and students who have an identified communication disability. And then the fourth largest area is that 13.9%, which is students who have autism diagnoses. Those categories have remained fairly stable, other than the emotional has grown. Over the last couple of years, the emotional category has seen a somewhat of an increase. And I think that's, that's possibly, you know, something that we may see continue to rise here as we move through the COVID, the COVID pandemic. But hopefully, once we get kids back in school, things get, you know, more normalized, then perhaps that number will, will increase some. In terms of students with disabilities specifically, the state had identified to us three different categories that we needed to take a look at students and how they're doing relative to their special education services and their special education needs. They actually broke these services down into three different areas. The first one is called recovery supports, and those are supports that all students are receiving, whether we are, are trying to fill in educational gaps, whether we are providing some additional supports or changing the pace of instruction, or perhaps we backed up and we did more review. All students in all schools across our district are receiving recovery supports, per se. For students on IEPs for whom those recovery supports were not enough, and in terms of they were still showing some significant regression or some significant lack of progress, the state has indicated that we need to work with those students around some COVID. They're called COVID compensatory services, or CCS. Those students are currently receiving ongoing assessment. For most of our high-need students, if not all of our high-need students across the district, we were able to identify which students needed compensatory services by December. And those conversations took place with, with IEP teams, inclusive of the parents, of course. And we identified these were students who had that significant challenge still in place, and therefore, we would put in place a plan in order to try and fill in those gaps. For some of those students, those compensatory services may actually be delayed until next summer, and that's when those additional services would be put in place. But we're actually trying very hard to put those services in place now in order to get kids caught up to where they were and to where we, we hope they would be by this point in the school year quicker than, than if we were to wait till, till next summer. For other students on IEPs, you know, where they're not necessarily our high-need students, but still, we need to take a look and see if they have recovered all of the skills that are identified in their IEP, and they are meeting those requirements. Those kind of conversations are happening at their IEP meetings, typically their annual review meeting that is occurring throughout the school year. For some of those students who are not identified as high-need students, those, those conversations might be taking place as late as March or in April. But we're taking a hard look to make sure that students are making up that progress. Some will take a little longer than others, but where they don't seem to be making that progress, we're having harder conversations and taking a look at what we need to do to fill in, in those gaps. Then we would have perhaps a handful of students who might need new IEP services as a result of the pandemic, meaning that when we came back together and we started talking about how the student was doing and what the impact of the school closure in the spring had on that student, they actually might be identified with a new disability category area that we need to address. And so, we would be adding those IEP services to that student's IEP through that team meeting process. The important thing to, to kind of think about relative to this process that we've been working on all fall is that all of this conversation relates back to school closure from March through June. The conversation is not necessarily looked at right now relative from September to January, where a student might be hybrid or remote. This conversation specifically with state guidance is linking back to that school closure that we had in the spring. And I would encourage parents who, who continue to have questions or continue to see this significant regression in their, in their student to, to reach out to their liaison, their special ed liaison. If you have not had your annual meeting yet, that will be coming up, and you can certainly have conversation about it there. But if you have a higher level of concern, then, then please reach out to your schools and to your liaisons in order to have that conversation earlier if you feel the need. So, some of the things that we're looking at in terms of mitigating the challenges that COVID-19 has brought on, and I've indicated a list here, is trying to lessen the impact of failing grades. I know that some students are really struggling, and we as a district have identified that in terms of a student who perhaps does poorly on a test or poorly on a project, they are not receiving a grade lower than 50 for that project, even if in fact their grade was lower. We want to make sure that students have the opportunity to bring those grades up, and having a grade no lower than 50 gives them that opportunity. I know that Nicole Bottomley and perhaps some of the other principals or Peter has talked about that in prior school committee meetings as well. We have started to shift some struggling students from the hybrid model to the full in-person model. And, and in making that shift, you know, their, their services or their, their schedule has remained essentially the same, but they are now in the school building five days a week instead of two or, or three depending upon that week, and receiving those services full in person. And we're hoping that, that opportunity to have more connection with their teachers, to perhaps feel more comfortable asking questions, that that will help them to improve their learning. We're also increasing counseling supports and other academic-type interventions for students. I know specifically in the middle school, they have incorporated an academic intervention block. It's a six-week block that students can receive academic support. And there's also a six-week block where they can re-receive social emotional wellness support in a very targeted intervention kind of way, and those takes place in the afternoon during an intervention block section that is set aside for that type of, that type of support. And then one of the things that we're continuing to discuss, as a matter of fact, it's on one of our, our meetings agendas for tomorrow, is the potential expansion of extended school year services. For those students who receive extended school year services, meaning that they show significant regression if they are not in school over school vacations, in particular, summer school, summer vacation where that vacation is longer, we are potentially recommending that we expand ESY services from five weeks, which is typical, to six weeks this year, just to help mitigate that, that impact. Potentially increasing staff in in order to make our tutoring groups smaller. So, instead of having a tutoring group in reading or in math of, say, 10 students or 12 students, we may maybe try to bring that number down to five or six students so students could get more individualized attention and support during that tutoring lesson. That we would add a full-time counselor to extended school year staff. This past summer, when we were open for in-person services in part, and then some of our students received remote services for ESY, we added a halftime counselor, or actually, I think she only worked 10 hours during that, during that week. I think that is halftime for ESY. But I think this year, understanding that a lot of students are still struggling with some of these social emotional challenges that are coming with the school, the school closure and the hybrid model and the remote model, that we would add a full-time counselor to that staff. And then I want to start thinking about whether we have English Language Learners or Title I students or students who are currently receiving RTI services, response to intervention, those types of students who may not be on a Bible four plan, or they may not be on an IEP. But we're noting through school and parents as well that they are really struggling. And we want to talk a little bit about how we could potentially add in some supports for those types of students. Again, probably more using that tutoring model, whether it be in-person or remote. We still have not quite figured out, and the state might guide us on that a little bit as we get closer to ESY too, whether services can be a combination or whether we're full in person. But we want to talk about those students who aren't necessarily special education students and the services they might need over the summer in order to come back stronger in the fall and ready to jump right back in. Another area that we have been working on this year is mood check. This has been something that the district has been engaged in for the last three years. The middle school actually went through their mood check in December of 2020, so just last month. And we did have a meeting a week or two ago with Tracy Gladstone, who is the coordinator of mood check, in order to, to really trying to survey students and target what their social emotional needs might be and how they're feeling about things. And we had that meeting about a week ago or two weeks ago. Some of the things that were identified in there was that there was an increased follow-up rate. So, for students who had perhaps a flag during the survey, perhaps something that they reported caused Tracy or one of her staff to become concerned about that student, and typically, they would want to do a follow-up. And they have identified that a higher number of students identified with a flag that, that, that one of the mood check staff would want to follow up with those students. But in combination with that, we've actually had a higher number of parents opting out of that follow-up because they're indicating that they're already aware that their student is struggling in this way, and they're already taking steps in order to provide that support. So, while we've seen an increased rate that might, would indicate we need to do follow-up, we've actually seen a higher number of parents opting out of that follow-up. The high school mood check survey is scheduled for March of this year, so that has not yet occurred. And as usual, families may opt out of that screening, and we have had some families do that. Just another thing that had been commented on relative to Tracy's brief report out was that it does seem to be taking a little longer for families or for students who need counseling services to be able to connect with counseling services in the community. I think they're just seeing an increased number of families reaching out, and those counselors are booked or are full. And I know that people are really trying to kind of stretch those services and fit as many folks in as they can, but right now, it's taking a little longer to connect and access those services than, than typical. And then the last thing I just wanted to comment on, things that we've been working on, link to the tiered focus monitoring that we had done in December of 2019. So, some of you may recall that in December of 19, Desi comes in and does essentially an audit of services that we provide. And of course, the section that I'm most connected with is the special ed section. So, when you see these numbers after, after the text SE56, that stands for Special Education Criterion Number 56. So, these are the four criterions that I've been working on throughout the fall and have recently submitted these to Desi for review. And the first one is really about how we evaluate and monitor our programs and services. And while we have a number of things in place, they were looking for something a little more robust. And so, I am working with the students, the SSAs in each of the buildings, as well as CPAC, in terms of identifying ways that we can do not only a broader but also deeper review of our services on a fairly routine basis. This might include bringing folks in from the outside. It might include observations, review of IEPs, consultations with teachers. So, that, that's an area that we're working on right now. Also, we had a criterion relative to CPAC where Desi had wanted to see a higher collaboration with CPAC and our special ed administrators and our special ed department. So, we have worked with CPAC. We are, are currently revising our parent IEP meeting survey in order to include some additional questions that allow parents to advise us of their concerns. We're also reviewing a lot of the data that we are collecting through SE56, the one above, with CPAC in order to get input and carry that back to school personnel so that they are having a larger impact. We reviewed the current parent's IEP meeting survey. We reviewed those data results with CPAC, which indicated primarily that for a lot of our very targeted protocols, Desi requirements that we have to follow in terms of IEP meetings, we got very high scores. We were at like 100% of the parents who responded indicated that we were doing what we were supposed to be doing, or 94% indicated that they had received all of the documents that they were supposed to receive prior to and after the IEP meeting. One area that I did note that we need to do a little better on is making sure that we explicitly talk with parents about whether their students, as a result of their disability, might be more vulnerable to bullying while at school. And when we're identifying that students might be more vulnerable to bullying, then what are we doing in order to support skill building in that area? That came out about 50/50. About 50% of the parent participants in the survey indicated that it was explicitly talked about, and about 50% indicated that it wasn't. However, in review of that particular question, as, as also was noted in a couple of other questions, some of those questions were a little ambiguous in the way that they were worded, and that suggested to a parent that if you didn't think it was an issue, then you responded no. And if you did think that it was an issue, you responded yes. So, we reworked those questions in order to make them clear and to make sure that our data that we're getting is an actual reflection of how parents feel about that. A third area that we had worked on when, when Desi came in last December, they had found three special education teachers whose licenses needed to be updated. That has all been corrected. We are good to go there. And then the fourth thing that was, that I had been working on was the physical restraint policy. And actually, Cynthia had worked on that with Meg Camery prior to her leaving in June. And a new policy, JKAA, had been developed and supported by school committee. But what, what Desi had identified was that there was a number of other procedures that really needed to be attached to that policy and needed to be more explicit. So, we created an attachment, which is called JKAA P for procedures, and then combined that with JKAA R, which is our, actually our restraint form that we use to report on. We combined the procedures and the restraint document with that policy in order to make it a more robust indication of what we were, what we were working on and what that restraint policy looks like. And that is it for my slides today.
Thank you, Kelly. I know you did a ton of work on that. You have COVID thrown on top, so, you know, kudos to you for all that you and SSAs and all the special ed teachers are, are doing. And I just have, I have one question for you, just in general, about mental health. Is there a conversation? So, I know that we partner with Hollisting Youth and Family Services, but is there a partnership or a group that's really focusing on mental health now that we're sort of still in crisis mode, if you will? Because I just think that that's such an issue that, that is just keeps blooming, right? And I think for everyone, at some point, you know, there's isolation, et cetera. Is there any support that you need from the committee to sort of, you know, help strengthen whatever we're doing with the community? Because it really is a community issue, not a school issue, per se. So, I guess, is there a partnership and do you need any support from us?
So, we have a student support providers group within the school system that actually includes like Jackie Weiner from Holliston Youth and Family Services, but then includes a very broad spectrum of folks skilled with mental health challenges across the district. And that would include all of our counselors. It includes our school psychologists. It includes our DCBA's, our nurses. Our assistant principals also attend that group. And we have developed some subcommittees who are actually are kind of peeling off and really trying to take a look at some targeted instruction for our counselors, some targeted instruction for our students, really trying to get in there and dig in deeper and be much more proactive, understanding that as this goes on longer and longer and longer, that folks are really starting to struggle more. I think some, you know, some students are, are just really missing that connection with their peers, that connection with their teachers. It's been harder to build, I think, relationships by having to do a lot of our instruction through, through Zoom or, or other platforms. And so, in recognizing all of that, we have that student support providers group working on these kind of things in a much broader kind of perspective. From that, we've identified and developed a couple additional subcommittees that are working on some very targeted things around scope and sequence, around really trying to just build up our muscle in that social emotional area. around really trying to just build up our muscle in that social emotional area. We're looking at providing another training with NAMI Turk for the community and and just trying to kind of stay abreast and up to date with what's going on and having NAMI and our other service providers within the school system be able to bring to the community some ideas around support right there within your family, things that you can do on a daily basis in order to help keep, you know, strong mental health in place at home. So there's a number of things that we're working on. And I think that our central office administrative team is also kicking around some additional ideas about what might be helpful, not just now, but in the near future as well. So we're really trying to work on it. I know that it's a really large area of concern and it's not just us in the school system. I know that's across the community. Everybody sees it.
Definitely. So we so Selectwoman Hein and I have had some conversations about it. We also have personal connections with Senator Spilka's office. So, you know, please, you know, just remember that, know that, you know, let us know too what we can do to help because again, it really is. I just, I think the message is it's really a community issue and not just a school issue. But there are so many people that that are concerned about it and want to support the schools however we can and the students and that, so.
And we need to remember that, you know, even if we are back full in in fall, we are not stepping back into where we were, right? There are still going to be struggles that we are left dealing with for some period of time. And there's certainly opportunity there to to recognize where we need to build in proactive kind of training for our students, proactive kind of training for our staff, and just work on that as a, like I said, a really robust kind of picture of where we're going with all of that.
For leading the charge. Did anyone have any questions? Catherine?
So my question actually follows up directly with what you're speaking about. First of all, thank you for all of that information regarding the the mental health piece. The COVID compensatory services, is that just for academics? Or is that for the social emotional piece as well? And then, sorry, I was gonna say, so and then and then and then and if so, I part my question, what I would love for you to give some some light to is, so for the for the younger grades that are not getting mood check and are remote or are hybrid, how are those kids being screened or assessed for their social emotional well-being if they're not getting mood check and they don't have in-person contact?
So for the first, the first part, the COVID compensatory services, those link, those three types of supports link directly to students who are on IEPs, students who are identified as special education students. The COVID compensatory services can can have a very broad spectrum. Primarily, it's around students' IEP goals and services. So that's that's the primary that we're looking at. So if you have a student who has a social emotional goal on their IEP, we are looking at whether they have been able to either recoup skills, whether they've been able to, you know, kind of step back in and and, I guess, make up some of that progress that they may have lost in the spring, right? But it links directly to students who are on IEPs. And if they have a social emotional goal on their IEP, then certainly it relates back to that as well. But then we also have students, I believe, who who's who might have a social emotional challenge, but it's impacting their academics, right? And so sometimes I think we have to kind of dig deep. While they might not have a social emotional goal on their IEP, it's that status that's impacting their ability to recoup those skills academically. And so we're kind of looking at big picture, looking at it more holistically when we're taking a look at students and trying to figure out why they're not making the kind of progress now that they might be back in school, full-time or even in a hybrid mode, why they're not making that kind of progress and what we're going to do in order to to remediate or mitigate that 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 factor. So relative to the younger students, I don't really have an answer for you on that. That's that's an excellent question. I know that the the elementary counselors are involved in our student support providers meetings. We have elementary counselors on our subcommittee meetings who are really taking a deep look as to how we're going to proceed and how we're going to move forward. I will absolutely bring some screening options, you know, to talk about screening options for those students as well. And I hear you loud and clear relative to those students, especially the ones who are fully remote. You know, they are they are high on my radar just because some of those students, you know, are actually doing quite well with full remote because we've taken some of the reason for their anxiety out of that picture. But that also means that we're not working on that, right? Because they're not in school for us to work on it. We have to find a different way to be working on that and building building those skills prior to their return, hopefully, in the fall. So I will bring your exact question back to the group and really get some targeted answers. And I can share that back out with you.
I would love that.
Hi, Kelly. Thank you very much for all of that information. I had a couple of follow-up questions on mood check. That is not the entire middle school. That is just grade seven.
Correct. That's true. Right, right. Yep.
And is the data from December 2020 available yet? Or were you you were discussing the May 2020 data. Is that correct?
So so the May 2020 data, so we don't have the December 2020 data. If that's not out there yet, and we don't have, we don't have that information yet either. But in that slide, the May 2020 data, they actually compared that to the 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 data that was done prior. I don't know exactly what month that was. Peter might know that better than I do, whether that was December of 19 or January of 19. Do you remember when that was done?
I think it was at the middle school, November, I think, November, and then the high school might have been January.
So when they compared the May of 2020 data to the November of 2020 data, they did not find a significant increase in challenge. There was some, but they deemed it less significant. But they did find that the impact was greater for girls than for boys. And that one of, you know, the survey questions, there are survey questions on there that that talk about what some of your practices might be in order to help mitigate that 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 challenge around moving to remote. And they found that those folks who those kids who had reported routine exercise and had reported that they were able to maintain those connections with friends, that they had saw less of an impact from the school closure, according to the May 2020 compared to the November. But when we met with Tracy just a week or two ago, we did not have that specific data from the December of 2020 other than for her to say that they had more flags, kind of, more children were flagged as a result of concerns around their answers to survey questions than had been on any of the prior mood checks that we had done. And you're right. So in middle school, it's just grade seven. And then at the high school, it's grade nine and 11. Is that correct, people? Peter, right, nine and 11?
So Kelly, interestingly, the November 2019 was seventh grade. And then they were checked again in May 2020. So you were comparing within the same grade. But now, again, we do it seventh grade. So this is a different grade of kids that we're comparing to last year's kids. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then the only other question I had was on, and I thought that was, it was great data to see the pie chart that you gave with the 23.9% specific learning disability, the categories of of that you put up in percentages. And you had talked about the 14.9% emotional and how that was an increase. Is there any way to compare that data to other Metro West schools or or the state? And also look back historically? I mean, you must be looking back historically if you're telling us the emotional percentage is increasing. But do we compare that to other Metro West schools and statewide and also look at it historically?
So my historical perspective actually came from prior slides that Meg Camery had created in order to identify what those disability categories were. I don't have anything to compare statewide, but that would be a really interesting question for me to put out to my Jabba Light group, which is made up of other student service directors here in our our region, our area. And I would be happy to do that and see if anybody else can can compare data with us.
Thank you.
Hi, just one comment and a question. So I just wanted to compliment Kelly and let all of you know what a good job she has done working with CPAC. So I'm the liaison to the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, otherwise known as CPAC. And so Kelly and I get to be in a lot of meetings together. And I feel like she has just done an outstanding job connecting with the parents, listening, asking really good questions and really taking in what parents are saying to her. And I think it's just been a really, really positive start to having her as the as the new SSD with this group of parents. So just yay, Kelly. I think that I think you've done a great job.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. It is a great group of proactive parents that we have on that committee. And they're they're fun to work with and they're very passionate about the, you know, about the the subjects that we talk about. So it's an easy group to work with and I really appreciate everybody's support of me and stepping in as the new as the new person.
They're also fierce warriors for their children and for other children with special needs. So they are a really, just a really great group of of women. And I and I so appreciate that that you have stepped right into that role and just really tried to meet them where they're at and roll up your sleeves and and work hard. So it's been a really good experience. So my question is, I I just wanted to, I guess it's more, it's half question, half opinion. I just wanted to put it out there that I think as a member of the budget subcommittee and knowing that we're going into to budget season now, a little bit late, I just want us all to kind of wrap our heads around some of the items that we've been talking to and what that might look like going forward from a budget perspective. I think that we're going to have to be open to the idea of putting some extra funding into social emotional over the next few years. And I think that it is, you know, I'm always worried about the kids who are on IEPs and 504s. And, you know, I worry about the kids with special needs and how they might have an outsized impact to something like this. But I have to say, what I'm hearing now, more than anything, is from the parents whose children are not on IEPs or not on IEPs yet and whose children are really struggling. And I think that as a community, as a school system, we're going to have to find a way to support that group of kids in particular over the next couple of years. Because the pandemic, it's it's not like the ramifications of this are all going to go away once we all get vaccinated. You know, this is something we're going to be dealing with. I know you all know this, but we're all going to be dealing with this for many years to come. And I think that we're going to have to be very thoughtful this budget season about where we put our money in a way that can positively impact some of the kids who are struggling the most. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there as as a sort of an addendum to what we've been talking about. Thank you. Thank you, Kelly.
Can I jump in? Just Lisa, that to what your point is, is exactly what we've been talking about. When we do get to propose a budget, hopefully very shortly, we'll be talking about that. It's really going to focus on what are the current needs based on COVID, regression of students, learning gaps created by COVID, and the social emotional piece, the trauma that students are dealing with is very, very real and very rampant and throughout the country, throughout the state. So that will be a focus of our discussion. And we may forego some of the things we would ask for in a normal year as a result.
Hi, Kelly. Thank you so much for all of that information. I don't have, do you, did you send those slides to us? Because I don't have them as part of our packet.
Like, did I send them to you?
Well, I mean, so oftentimes we get, you know, the presentations in our, you know, packet for our meetings. So I didn't have it. So I just, I was trying to write all the data down, like all the, you know, the percentages and all the data down, but it'd be awesome if you'd be willing to share it, even if it's.
I'm happy to share. I didn't know. Yeah, I didn't know. I'll know for next time to share that.
That's fine. I know you, I mean, I just, I didn't know you were going to do a full presentation in that way. And so I was trying to furiously write things down, but I know that I was, didn't get, catch everything. So but thank you.
We'll get Dan's and Kelly's off to you tonight.
Okay, thank you. The others that I wanted to thank you for, you know, jumping in and helping and partnering with us and on our policy subcommittee meetings so that we can move those along much more quick, much more quickly when we have your an additional voice at the table. And and then my question about your presentation is you talked about things like other mitigating strategies. And one was that, you know, students were getting, you know, specifically getting exercise that was helping to mitigate that. Would there be a consideration of creating exercise groups, knowing that we have a lot of students who are not able to participate in their, you know, their traditional sport that they would be doing during, you know, I mean, I know that's certainly for the high school true, but it's also true for the middle school and in other grades, whether or not that would be something that we could use and whether that would be something that would be qualifying for CARES Act funding or, because again, this is all impacted because of that. So I just, some thoughts about that.
That's a cool idea.
You're muted, Stacy.
Sorry. Were there any other questions for Kelly? No? All right. Kelly, thank you so much. We are going to review the the immunization of students policy, if you want to stick around. But you're not required or anything. I just wanted you to know it's on the agenda if you feel you need to jump in. Otherwise, thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Thanks again for the opportunity to present.
All yours.
Okay. Mr. Bide, thank you for the tip to eat pizza from Corner Market. I have my first pizza from there tonight.
I'm not sure we're allowed to advertise on public television.
I'm sorry.
I had to had to shout out for that pizza. Okay, so I just wanted to provide a brief update on where we are with the technology department. I last spoke to the school committee in October, if you recall. But I divide the presentation into two parts. Basically, priority needs means there will likely be some sort of financial need associated with these. Some of the needs have already been met and some are forecasted. And then the updates section would be some major topics, which will probably be no surprise to many of you. So for student devices, I feel like we're in a good shape thanks to the December town meeting and the support of the town. We're very fortunate. We had Chromebooks for grades six and nine approved at that town meeting. We were worried about inventory and the competition for Chromebooks. Those Chromebooks actually arrived two months earlier than expected, which was a gift. And the vendor threw in an additional year of warranty, which made it very easy to deploy those Chromebooks now. So that's what we're planning to do to grades five and grades eight. By doing that, we can upgrade immediately grade four and grade two and three remote students as well. So it actually should work out very well. So all of these, all of these Chromebooks being transferred back and forth is happening over the next few weeks. And I have to shout out to Nick Couton, who's been a huge help as far as transporting these devices between the schools. By the way, feel free to stop me on any of these slides if you have questions rather than waiting till the end. Okay, the other possible financial impact would be the software subscriptions that we currently have. These are big ticket items. I have Zoom on here. That's probably the biggest ticket item, but obviously the most essential for what we do. So it it just depends on what model we're going to be in for 21, 22. So if we're in a current model that we're in right now, we will still need Zoom. So that could be the financial impact. If we're back to normal, then probably not. There are other COVID-related software subscriptions too. And we're analyzing all that data to see which ones might remain because they are beneficial for either model. The last possible financial impact is. The last possible financial impact is infrastructure related. So if you recall, we've upgraded the high school, middle school wireless, and that has gone pretty well. We have a couple bumpy road, bumpy days here and there. But overall, the performance has been very good. So we'd like to do the same thing to Miller and Placentino. The wireless there is going to be six years old this summer. And you know, with six years in technology, what that can do. So basically, any new device we buy is, it's going to work at Miller and Placentino, but it's not going to work to its maximum capacity as far as performance. So the new staff laptops we bought and any new Chromebooks we place at the elementary level, they will work fine right now, but with the newer wireless technology, they'll work that much better. So I'm going to recommend that as a potential capital or however it's decided, that we upgrade that wireless. And and the big benefit there is we get E-rate reimbursement. And that's a 40% reimbursement to the town with a project like this. If we don't do it this summer and we, we're in the middle of next year and we find we're having problems, we would have to absorb the entire cost, the town would. So there's a benefit to using the E-rate process for this project. Dan, do you have a guess on how much that's going to cost? Yes, about $44,000. Okay, thanks. You're welcome. The other thing we're taking a hard look at, and I want to thank Chris Mayo for helping with this, is everyone has heard about the cyber attacks in Massachusetts surrounding school districts. It's on my mind every day. So we're looking at ways to strengthen and prevent those. So one of those ways is actually our network design. And so Chris and I are taking a hard look at that. We can actually make some changes in our network design and and prevent, prevent us from being crippled from a cyber attack. In addition to that, we're looking at possibly strengthening our firewall. And that could be a possible change. So anyway, there could be a cost to that because it might be more than our existing firewall. But to me, it's worth it if it prevents a cyber attack that's crippling for a week or two. Okay, so that's the end of the things that I believe could have a financial cost associated with them. So I want to switch to some updates unless there's other questions about those other, other items. Okay, many people on the call today participate in this. So I don't know if it's a good or bad reaction. But anyway, we, we received a grant, the town of Holliston received a grant last January before COVID surrounding cybersecurity. And basically, we identified 120 people, I think, in the town and schools to participate. And for the school side, it was people that dealt with financials and sensitive student data. For example, folks that had many permissions and power school admin. Those folks were targeted for this training because we wanted to protect student data. So basically, we received a grant and the grant focused on training folks. It was all self-paced training with assessments. And it prioritized email attacks. I mean, we, we saw everything, all kinds of email attempts in the trainings. And then the state actually launched fake phishing attacks on our staff. And if a staff member clicked the link that they weren't supposed to, they would be redirected to more training. So folks became very paranoid, probably a good thing. They asked me, should I click this or not click this? I was like, don't click it, call the person. That's, that's the bottom line. If you're, if you're not sure, call the person and make sure it's legit. Anyway, I'm happy to say that 89% of our staff, that's town and schools together, completed it. If we reached an 80% threshold, then the town received a cyber insurance discount. So we achieved that and the state average was 52%. The next step, so that was only 60 of our staff. We obviously have way more than that. So the next step, and it's a big one, is how to train the rest of the Holliston staff. So I don't have an answer to that, but my forecast is that we would hopefully do that before the next school year and somehow embed that in our back-to-school training. And then another step I believe we need to take, and I've mentioned this before, is for cybersecurity reasons, is to move our applications to the cloud. And we have one left to do that. By doing that, we decrease our local servers and possible cyber threats. So we're well on our way there. And then the last thing I mentioned earlier was strengthen network border security. And that's through a more robust firewall. All right, exciting. We have a new website. It's coming soon. I can't, unfortunately, can't give a date because there's still a lot of work to do. But COVID keeps getting in the way, but we will get there. So trust me on that. This is, there'll be a lot of work on this website in February. So I plan to update you and and the town, obviously, with our progress very soon. So look for updates in the coming weeks on that. I wanted to share, this is somewhat old news, but where we are with computer science, because I know before COVID, this was one of our top priorities. So we are circling back to these items and ramping them back up again, knowing that we all see, hopefully COVID is going to end soon. So anyway, back in May, to last May, we participated in a workshop through a grant. The five people you see on the screen, Ally, Curly, Tina, Matt, Tom and Chris. We attended a strategic planning workshop for computer science. It was excellent. It was tough to pull off, honestly. It was two full days in the middle of May when COVID was hitting us hard. But we did it and it gave us a great action items to expand our computer science program. So the bottom line is we have to create goals and smart goals and try to meet those goals. And also, we need a lot more stakeholder input into our computer science program. So I just want to let you know there's progress made, but we're circling back and we need to ramp that back up again.
Can I interrupt you for a second about that?
Yes.
Do you have a, a group or a council that's working on that computer science group? Like a parent council or anything? Or is it just the group of you, the five of you that are working on that?
It was the five of us and we don't have that group yet, but I anticipate that forming. And it's, it's going to be part of our, I'll mention it down later in the presentation, just the whole strategic technology plan and incorporating that group as a sub, that plan. So it's a great question.
Okay, thanks.
But we definitely will be seeking external stakeholder input.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. So just wanted to share a couple of smart goals that we looked at. One of those was just increase CS awareness across all content areas. One thing they recommended, which we've been thinking all along, is other content areas should be teaching computer science standards. It's a very difficult thing to pull off, but there's definitely some math and science standards that overlap with computer science. So we're going to look, take a hard look at all that. And then we need to strengthen our computer science assessments as well. And I missed the top bullet, I apologize. But we've been, Peter and I have been working to, with a group of, the tech integration group, to align the K-12 standards across all, all the computer science and digital learning standards. So we need to finalize that document. It's another piece of the work. Okay, the last thing I wanted to mention was strategic planning. So this, this is the umbrella that we, all of these things need to work under. But we do have a strategic technology plan, the work on it. You know, we hit the pause button with COVID. So again, we need to, we're circling back and ramping this back up. But we have some really exciting news. We're part of a national group, a national interoper, interoperability group for all of our applications. And part of being on this committee is we get a free peer review of our entire technology environment by national experts. So this should happen in the spring. And the goal for this review would be to, again, help us with the strategic techno, technology planning. So stay tuned for more information about that.
Dan, can I interrupt you again?
Yes.
What do you mean technology environment? Do you mean like what kind of equipment we're using? Do you mean our infrastructure? Do you mean, I'm not, I'm just not quite sure what you're.
No, another great question. I'm actually not sure either because we just had our first meeting last week, but they made it sound like it was a big deal, like it would cost a lot of money normally. But.
Like a top-down audit of everything?
Audit of everything.
Website, everything, oh, that sounds awesome. Okay.
Applications, devices, yes.
Okay.
Everything. PD.
Sounds like a very big deal. Yes, thank you.
It's, I'm looking forward to it. And I imagine it's going to be a ton of work, but we, we could use it for sure. So.
Yeah, because that would really help us in strategic planning for the future in terms of budgeting, et cetera. That's awesome. Thanks.
Yep, so I leave you with the question. This is after COVID, you know, what, what is the new vision for technology in Holliston? And that's the big one that will drive all of this. So with that peer review and the software that might remain, the devices, we, we feel pretty good about our devices right now. But we need to just paint that picture and and plan around it. So with that, I'm open to any more questions. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone have any questions for Dan at this time? No, I think we certainly, I think the wheels will start turning in terms of our vision for what technology is going to look like, once you have that peer review. I think that'll be a big conversation starter. Peter?
I just have one, one kind of additional connected thing. Last year, Tom Reed presented the new computer science endorsement program at the high school. And in his first year, we have 26 students working to pursue that. So as a first-year initiative in the midst of a pandemic, it's, you know, it's definitely a good start that I know will grow as we continue to do this work with, with Dan and the others.
Peter, can I ask you a question about that? Is there a curriculum that is set out on our, our website? So the people that are looking at this computer science curriculum, can they find that somewhere? Or how do they, how do parents access that?
That's a good question. I know that it's, it's, it's shared with students and I, I'll have to check to see if it's currently part of the handbook as well and how else it's shared. But I'll get back to on that.
Particularly just because I'm looking at, you know, students who are, would be in eighth grade right now. They'll be looking to go to the high school and, you know, whether that will make some impact, whether they choose to do something like looking at KEAT tech and what their programs are and making some comparisons. And it'd be nice if we had something on our website or pushed something out to the community so they knew that what was available here.
Yeah, I, I do know it's being shared in some way, but I'll find out how it's being shared and if it's sufficient and how we make sure that it's more public and, and people are aware of it.
Fantastic, thank you.
With the redesign of the website, is there going to be a point, some point in time where parents can weigh in on what they want to see in the new website?
Yes, we have some flexibility, like our design is pretty static. We had, we put it through stakeholder groups late, late last spring. And we did survey parents way back when, can't remember when, about what they would like to see on the new website. But the design is pretty much set, the front, front page, I should say, of each school and the district is set. But after that, we have a lot of flexibility as far as content and menu items and things like that.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you.
We're hopeful the front pages will, will do what they're supposed to do and make it easy to find things and be very appealing.
Great, thank you so much.
Any other questions for Dan or can we let him go? Enjoy the evening. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Dan. He's done a great job. I mean, it's been amazing, the amount of technology that's been rolled out this year and the hours that it put in. So thank you so much for everything.
Dan, we'll be expecting another shout out the next time you join us.
Another pizza place, right?
Great to see you. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Cynthia, we're going to, you're going to share the first draft of JLCB?
I am. There, in your packet tonight, you should have a copy of a first draft of a new policy, JLCB immunization of students. I did send a memo out to the committee this afternoon, which I had drafted earlier, but then after, there were some changes from the state. So I were, I wasn't able to reflect that in the copy that you have today. So we'll, obviously, it's a first draft. So we're going to just have to cross out that section at the very bottom. But well, I have to read in full the, the policy all the way through. So you'll have to bear with me. I'll try to be as quick as I can. Okay. "In an effort to ensure a healthy and safe environment for students and staff, students entering the Holliston Public Schools, HPS, for the first time, whether at kindergarten or through transfer from another school district, will be required to present a physician's certificate attesting to immunization against communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Department of Health. The only exception to these requirements will be made on receipt of a written statement from a doctor that immunization would not be in the best interests of the child or by the student's parent or guardian, saying that vaccination or immunization is contrary to the religious beliefs of the student or parent guardian. Please note that the legal reference of Massachusetts General Law is Chapter 76, Section 15 detailed below. No child shall, except as here and after provided, be admitted to school except upon presentation of a physician's certificate that the child has been successfully immunized against diphtheria, pertussis, tetanus, measles, poliomyelitis, and such other communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time by the Department of Public Health. A child shall be admitted to school upon certification by a physician that he, I should say he or she, or they, has personally examined such child and that, in his opinion, the physical condition of the child is such that his, her, they, her, their, their health would be endangered by such vaccination or by any of such immunizations. Such certification shall be submitted at the beginning of each school year to the physician in charge of the school health program. If the physician in charge of the school health program does not agree with the opinion of the child's physician, the matter shall be referred to the Department of Public Health, whose decision will be final. In the absence of an emergency or epidemic of disease declared by the Department of Public Health, no child whose parent or guardian states in writing that vaccination or immunization conflicts with his sincere religious beliefs shall be required to present said physician's certificate in order to be admitted to school." And then the last paragraph, I'm not going to read because the state law has been rescinded. So I'm just crossing that out. And actually, I was trying to change the he's to they's, but it's actually within the law. So I can't actually change the verbiage, even though it's not, it's kind of sexist language, obviously. But I can't change it because it's Mass General Law. So I started writing that and I was like, wait, I can't do that. So anyway, does anybody have any questions about this? Yes. Yes, Andy?
So I understand obviously that the flu, the flu piece got withdrawn. Is there a reason that we're not requiring a recognized religious leader that oversees whatever religious beliefs they have to be, the one who certifies it? Because I just, I just worry about parents self, self.
I hear, yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Excusing effectively. Is there a reason that we can't?
Well, I think the other thing that we wanted to highlight in that was that, that last paragraph where it says, in absence of an emergency or epidemic of disease, which currently we are in. So I, I would think that that would mitigate some of the, some people saying that, you know, I'm just, my religious belief is I'm not going to do that. But it does not specify, but I could, I could reach out to see whether or not there, I don't, I don't understand that there would be. But, I mean, certainly if it's a medical reason, then you have to get a doctor's certificate. But we don't actually specify whether they would need to get something from a religious leader. Does anybody have any thought about that, maybe? Anybody? Dawn, Stacy?
Well, I think it's a good point and I, I, I am, I'm not opposed to it. I do think it's a good.
Yeah. Let me follow up.
I want, I'm, I have come in past with that. There are some exceptions where someone may be not affiliated with an actual church, but be part of a religion, and it gets tricky that way. So I think it's something we should look into a little further to make sure that we don't, because we don't want to discriminate in any way as well.
And Cynthia, that verbiage at the end, we traced right back to Mass General Law 76.
Yes.
15. So I think the, the answer is it comes right from that. If that was an exception that the law permitted, we would have included it. So I, Susan on that.
Catherine, you had a question?
I do, and maybe this is obvious, but I just want to make sure that I'm, that it's stated clearly for me because I'm not sure. So am I reading it correctly? That if, if we approve this policy, that should, should there be a pediatric vaccine available next year? We, we can require it of every student in order to come to school?
I, I think that's only if the state requires that. I don't think that's up to us to decide that.
That would, that would be included in this.
Yeah, because it's, yes. This is not, this is, you know, in a very, this policy is a common policy that most districts have. We had previously rolled that into our admissions, but in talking with Lynn Bowler and just trying to figure, trying to make sure that we are highlighting that the vaccines, that vaccines and having a proper health certificate are actually important and to make sure that we keep our students healthy as well as our community healthy. So we just wanted to make sure we had a standalone policy about immunizations, which this is the guy, this is basically the guidance policy from MASC. And then we just also just highlighted and put in there the actual law so that people could read that for themselves and not have to hunt for it. Go ahead, Dawn.
And Catherine, to your question, I think the third paragraph down where it says such other communicable diseases as may be specified from time to time to the Department of Public Health. So it won't be our call, it'll be the Department of Public Health's call. And then we'll have, based on the last paragraph, the fifth paragraph, if we are still in a emergency, then we have that further push to get vaccinations, but it will not be our call based on this policy.
Right.
So I, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding it correctly, that like if there is a new vaccine next year, that this does encompass that.
It would, it would for any vaccine. So like, let's just say, you know, they have Varicella is, I mean, they, they might start including others in here, but that's the call of the Department of Health, not us. So it just basically says anything that is current, we would have to abide by whatever the current statutes say that you have to have. On whatever that vaccine schedule is. So does anybody have any, I, I actually noted a couple of things up in the top paragraph that I just needed to change. I had students' parent or guardian, and I think that we usually just, we put one or the other, we slash it instead of saying or.
Yes. So we need to have a second reading.
We do.
We will schedule that for our next meeting. And Cynthia, while we have you, and it's, when is the next, do you want to share the next policy subcommittee?
I do.
Meeting?
It is February, hold on. And then July. It is February 9th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
And if you have other comments about it, just shout, send me an email or give me a shout out and we'll talk about it again before we read it out for the next time.
And in your packets are the meeting minutes that were approved at the last policy subcommittee meeting. So thank you for that, Cynthia. Budget Subcommittee and Superintendent's Evaluation, does anybody have any dates to share out for next meetings or anything? Okay, great. All right, let's jump right into old business. So Susan's going to give an update. And before I have her give an update, I just want to do a quick. Where's my note? We just need to re-vote on the amount. So last, at the two select board meetings ago, Dr. Cuska and Mr. Boudet petitioned the town to set aside some of the CARES funds from the town side for testing equipment. And the select board, they were more than generous and on board. And they went so far as to approve testing and for the unit and supplies up to $15,000. The meeting before that, we had only approved the request to be 4,000 or 4,500. So just to make it more official and aligned with the select board's vote, we need to re-vote our amount. So I would be interested in entertaining a motion to approve the school committee request that was made to the select board to set aside town CARES funds for COVID-related testing and mitigation, including the testing units and supplies up to the amount of $15,000.
Are we specifying that this is a PCR machine and we're, are we using a specific lab? Are we getting our own PCR machine? What, what was discussed?
When we went to the select board, the concern was that we don't know that we are going to be able to get the PCR machine. So we didn't want to lock ourselves in. So if we change directions beyond just mitigation related to PCR testing, we would go back for a different vote to use the money differently. So right now, because we don't know if we can get the machine, we may have other options that we would put forward to you and discuss.
Okay. And the idea is to use this for staff, students, and the town would be using this as well? Is that what?
Right now, the town had not, this was just specified for the schools. We certainly are, that's what we discussed, that we're willing to support them. And I'll talk about some other things that are coming up that we, we're happy to collaborate with them on. But initially, it was just for the schools, but certainly they could weigh in and ask for us to help with that as well.
Great work. Thank you very much. I, I would bring that motion.
Seconded by Cynthia.
By Dawn, seconded by Cynthia, all in favor. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Noworski?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. And again, thank you all. The select board and town administrator could not have been more supportive and, and just really, really appreciate that. Susan, all yours.
So since Cynthia started talking about the flu vaccine and as of just a few days ago, we were told by the Department of Education that there is no longer the requirement. We had started reaching out to parents early in the fall. It was supposed to be December 31st that all students had to be vaccinated. And when it got close to December 31st, they then changed that date to February. I forget if it was the end of February, but sometime in February, that all students had to be vaccinated. So we did actually have a part-time nurse come on to help us gather all the vaccinations and make sure we had them. We do have, the majority of our students have been vaccinated. And I thank all of the parents that did their due diligence. We talked earlier in the year about our nurses, led by Nurse Leader Lynn Bowler, did their own flu vaccine clinic. And students were able to drive up and get about 250 students, I believe, got vaccinated on school premises. So a huge undertaking on the school's part. And now because it's been a mild season, they are no longer requiring flu vaccinations. That doesn't mean it's not strongly recommended and it's still very important. And we're grateful that so many parents did do it, but we will not be chasing down any remaining small amount of families that decided not to do it at this time. So the next vaccination I want to talk about is where we're going with our hopeful, we're putting together a timeline for getting our educators vaccinated. And as you probably have heard, educators, which would include administrators in person, it would include people that are driving our buses, it would include staff that are working in our schools, are under Phase 2 of the, of the state vaccination process. That will be starting in February, beginning of February to mid-February. We were worried that if we did not have a plan in place to vaccinate within the town, within the schools, that like our first responders, if we don't have a place to send our staff, they would have to apply individually. They could get appointments all over the place and go individually and take, we were worried that how that might impact our schools being able to stay open if people had to take time off to drive to Foxborough and other venues. So thank you to Travis Ahern and Scott Moles and Chief Cassidy. We met to talk about what we can do as a town to try to get the vaccine in town. Because we have a small health department, we weren't able to fill out all the paperwork to get it started in town. However, Lynn Bowler and I had a meeting today and Scott Moles joined us. We're going to collaborate with a couple of our neighboring towns, which I won't mention the names yet, just because we're still early in the process. But a very exciting meeting today that we think that we're going to be able to get all of our staff vaccinated if they're willing and able sometime in early to mid-February. It may not be just on our school premises, but very nearby, and they would be able to get an appointment. And we would supply, some of our nursing staff would be hired to help mitigate this and combine with a couple of other towns. So I'm very excited that we are very likely going to get this process started. I'll be able to share more information in, in the upcoming days. And then another mitigation process that we're working on and hopefully being very quickly rolling out, starting next week. As you know, we got, Desi gave us antigen testing from Abbott Binax, and we do have that testing on site. But it's a very, well, we, we had to get some other pieces in place, even though the testing protocols themselves were free. We did have to get our own company to come in for the hazardous waste and removal of needles and things like that and get our staff trained. So we have not been able to use them yet. However, I did work with our nurse leader and nurses to say, if we have this testing on site, can we do more than just testing someone? If they come into school and then find out that they have symptoms, they could get tested in our schools. However, what about people that were asking to stay home? Can we test them? So we are putting in a process that if I'm a staff member on Sunday night, I start getting symptoms, so I don't come to work on Monday. I can call the school and I will be able to drive up and get tested on school properties outside in their car. And then we will be able to tell them right away if they are positive. If they test negative, they might still have to get a PCR test, but at least we could very quickly do close contacts and let them know if they're positive and get them back a lot quicker if they tested very quickly. So that is going to be rolled out in the next few days. And if we're able to do that successfully, the next piece will be, can we do the same for students that are staying home because they have to quarantine while they're symptomatic? They could also with their families, schedule an appointment, drive up and have one of our nurses go outside to test them on school property. So we think that will be a really helpful tool to help quickly identify some of our positive cases and get them back to school quicker. But more importantly, identify any close contacts right away and get them quarantined.
And I just want you to pause there for a minute. I, I just want to take the minute to highlight publicly because I think this is key. We didn't have a plan for the flu vaccine for our students and you and Lynn Bowler got it done. We didn't have a plan for vaccinating our staff. And you and Lynn Bowler are getting it done. I just want to highlight that. Thank you. Thank you for, for taking our request and running with it and getting it done. Thank you.
Well, I will, I will say the town has been really trying to support us as well. And, you know, sometimes it's really a matter of just being, looking into the networks we have in the communities. You know, the connections that Lynn has had over the years have been incredibly helpful. In fact, you know, she reached out to me yesterday with a name. I followed up and was able to get an appointment in a meeting set up today. So really, it's, it's, I have to credit Lynn for her due diligence in, in this entire process. And then another, oh, go ahead.
All right. I also just wanted to pause there and say thank you very much to Dr. Cuska and again to, to Lynn Bowler for this. We're a small town and when we didn't have a plan to get our nurses vaccinated, Lynn reached out and collaborated with other towns. And then she didn't stop there. She worked and you worked first with the town and when that didn't work, to collaborate with others to do it. And that's, we really appreciate that. And the testing, what you've been able to accomplish on the testing for a small town like Holliston is great. I mean, we, we know that Wellesley and Martha's Vineyard and Watertown and Harvard and Revere and others have implemented or in the process of implementing it, but we're in that unique position where we are a small town. So I really appreciate that as far back as October, you applied for that rapid antigen testing. And there's a lot of pieces to it. Lynn was describing how you had to get licensing for different testing and the hazardous waste. So by having the forethought to have applied to that program back in October, now we're that much farther ahead to be able to use something like PCR or some kind of pool testing now. So thank you both.
Thank you, Dawn. Yeah, and I will talk a little bit about the pool testing because you and I and Lynn and many of us have attended a number of webinars related to pool testing. And right now, we're still in the process of Desi has put us on the list for the potential of getting pool testing. But in all honesty, I'm not quite sure if that's a direction where that we will go ultimately, because the pool testing really seems to be more successful if you're having transmission at school, which some districts have seen. Right now, I'm still not connecting any dots that we've seen. If anything, maybe one case that potentially we still couldn't trace back to school. Every other case, we've traced to outside sources. So we have not seen any transmission in school through staff or students. And that's telling us that our mitigation strategies are working. People are listening, they're staying home if they're symptomatic or if they've traveled or if they are a close contact, and that has prevented school transmission. So the pool testing alone could impact us significantly about quarantining students that don't need to be home. So I have a little bit of a worry about that. I'll talk more about it as we get more information and decide our next steps. But it is a very cost prohibitive procedure to get through if we decide to go with pool testing. That is reflex testing, just for staff alone, for surveillance, it could be 4,500 a week. And the reflex testing means they would test with a pool. And then if we had one positive, then they would have to test the, the group that tested positive to find out which people in that group were positive or persons. And that is $15 a person per week, which as you can tell with up to 2,900 students could be a significant amount. And I'm not sure from the distance we've talked to that it's actually prevented cases. It's just giving more of a safety net and helping to reduce anxiety, but it really hasn't changed the transmission at all. Again, I'm not saying that we won't do it, but we're still, you know, the, the things that we're putting in place right now really are working with the mitigation that we're doing.
I, I guess my response to that would be, we've been ahead in many aspects throughout this pandemic. And what we're looking at right now is a COVID variant B.1.1.7. Two months ago, the UK, Germany, Austria, Ireland, Denmark, the Netherlands, they didn't anticipate they would be closing their schools in January and still having them closed on January 21st. To, but to the extent that we can be ready to go with this pool testing, if we get hit with a variant like that in February or March, when we don't have all of our staff immunized yet and our students aren't immunized yet, the ability to be ready to go with something like that can make the difference in whether we can keep schools open or reopen them. So I would again say that we need to push for that. In addition, we have on January 15th, the CDC issuing a stark warning about the variant and that it's projected to become the dominant source of infection by March. So I think we need to keep that into consideration. I think we also have to consider the fact that this disease will be with us for months and months. And I am thrilled to know that teachers will be part of, and all staff will be part of Phase 2 in February. And I am thrilled to know that teachers will be part of and all staff will be part of phase two in February. But they haven't even completed testing on kids younger than 16. So it's something that we need to be considering for the longer period. And I'm hopeful that the costs will come down, especially as Desi has talked about a program that allows for six weeks of free testing prior to enrolling into, into a, a longer term program. So it's something I'm passionate that we should continue to pursue.
Oh, yes. And we are pursuing it. It's just a matter of when we get to that point of determining whether we would use it as a weekly surveillance if we did, or would it just be as needed if we start to see transmission in school? So there's just a lot of questions still and it's the time commitment, all of that. If it's, if it's going to make a difference, absolutely. But if we don't have data to support it, we would just want to make sure we keep our options open for a lot of different things that we're working on.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, it's, I'm just wondering whether there's something that the town could be doing about this. I mean, I, you know, we're, we're, we're dealing with our small population of 3,000 students in terms of doing, you know, whatever the pool testing is or PCR testing. But I feel like this is a much larger issue than we should be just handling on our own. I feel like this is, you know, each town or, you know, district or whatever you want to call it, is going to have to figure out how to do this. And I, I think it's really hard to throw it all onto the schools as, you know, now it's your responsibility to keep the entire community safe. I mean, we're supposed to be educating our kids and certainly we're supposed to be keeping them safe too. And I totally agree that we should be looking at that avenue. But at what point is it really our job as a school district to be doing versus the town's job to be doing? And I don't mean that to throw it to, you know, kind of deflect it off to someone else. I'm just trying to be realistic about, you know, our resources versus the resources of someone outside of our, the school district. That's all. Just a consideration.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just, I'm concerned about not, I'm a little worried about not going down the road of pool testing or some kind of surveillance testing. And I hear you saying that, you know, we're exploring it and, but I just, I was really hopeful that we were going to get some news tonight that we had made some inroads on that. Because and, and kudos on, and the, the incredible inroads you've made on everything else. I'm not taking away from that at all. I'm just so worried about, you know, the numbers we're seeing, the variants. And it just seems like it's going to be really hard to keep schools open over the next couple of months if we have widespread community infection and no way of doing any kind of surveillance testing. I'm, I'm worried that, and, and I'm not, I do think this, the schools, I think the administration and, and our staff has done a first rate job. I don't think we could possibly ask for more in terms of the mitigation efforts, in terms of what you've done, in terms of what Lynn Bowler has done. I'm thrilled that the teachers are going to get vaccinated and that we're on top of that. But I just feel like this, the pool testing or some kind of surveillance testing is a big piece of the puzzle. And I think the next couple of months are going to be particularly critical. So I just, I guess like Dawn, I just want to put in another vote for pushing forward on that as much as we can. I mean, even if it meant that we had to hire another nurse to just do that, just take care of that piece of it. I am worried that keeping the schools open with such high numbers all over the state is, is risky.
Yeah. Let me just clarify, we're not, we're not stopping the momentum at all. I'm just, there are some concerns with how we would be able to do it and whether we could afford to do it, both with staff. If you did reflex testing and surveillance testing, pool testing for our students and staff on a weekly basis, that's about 52,000 a week. And the positivity rate that people are getting in various towns is a 0.02%, I believe in some of the towns. So I'm not suggesting that we're not still looking into it. I have a webinar that I'm attending with our nurse leader tomorrow. It's just a matter of as we move forward, we had to put, if, if we do have funds available, what is the most effective use of any money that we have that is actually showing some data that's mitigating? So we are still pursuing all of these and not stopping the momentum. And yes, that can shift at any time. If our transmission rates change, would we do, maybe do some surveillance without doing it every week? You know, there's a lot of different scenarios that we could have take place and we're not giving up on any of them. I'm just saying that where we are right now, it's not what would start in the next few weeks.
Catherine?
I just wanted to add, I, I recognize that the cost could be, could be an issue. I would love, well, in, in my mind, I would love to, if we can't test the students, which I know would be a massive undertaking, I'd love to offer it to the teachers and the staff. Since we know that there's, at least with the elementary kids, there's like a much lower rate of transmission. But to be able to offer them that sort of, you know, ability to have more information. I don't want to say security blanket or, or security net or anything like that, but just more, more information. I'm just, that's what comes to mind when I think like, I would, I would like to be able to give that to the staff to say like, here's, here's a testing option for you. And then there would be less and it would, you know, it would cost less. I don't know, I don't know what that means for the older students who's physiologically, they function more like adults in terms of the virus. But, but I don't think, I think we can do this pool testing without having to test everyone. I think there's strategic ways to, you know, to, to look at the science and use that as the basis of who gets tested next. That's just my two cents.
I, I also want to say, I understand the cost implications of doing 3,000 tests every week, right? But we also know that in the number of schools like Wellesley, Salem, Martha's Vineyard, Watertown, Harvard, Revere, Lexington, which I think we'll be implementing soon, they're not doing 100% every week. Not all of them, some of them are, Watertown is. But for example, when we closed the high school for five days after January vacation, if we could have implemented testing, we might've gotten kids in and maybe we would have saved six hours, 12 hours, 18 hours of instruction. There's even a thought, I mean, one thing private schools are doing when they come back from breaks is to test before they come back from a break, right? That might make sense. And again, it could be optional, but we have two more breaks coming up, February vacation, April vacation. And what we've learned from this past vacation is that the numbers have gone up and we had to close our schools for a week. So it's just a thought. It, it, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. It's not necessarily 3,000 people for $52,000 every week. But having it on hand to mitigate something like that and, and keep the doors open for in-person learning could be a good start.
Yeah, we've talked about all those scenarios, Dawn, as to whether if we were going to do it, would it just be around some of the vacation breaks? All of that is something that is still on the table as a consideration as we move forward. And just had one more thing, if there was another question. As you know, we've been, we started sports on February 11th. Our winter sports teams were able to begin practicing and some have already started games as well. And unfortunately, in just the first two weeks, we have had to quarantine two of our teams, one last week and one this week. So I'm not saying that we're, we're shutting down sports, but it is a real concern. It's something I discussed with you prior to sports starting, that that's a real consideration. Because every time we quarantine a team, that means we also temporarily quarantine their siblings. So I just want to reiterate that so that parents, if they do have an athlete who has to quarantine, they do understand that that means all of their own children at home have to quarantine before they can get back to school. We have to have a negative test for each athlete and then the, the siblings of the athlete would come back. So it is a real situation. It's happening, already has happened and in the neighboring towns as well. So again, it's just more I want to remind parents so that they don't question our procedures is that our sibling could stay home because some probably got notified just recently that that would happen as well. So let's hope it's not an ongoing battle, but it is a worry. And that's all I have, I think, for COVID updates.
A quick request on our dashboard or maybe something just to consider. In looking at other districts dashboards, for example, Ashland, they include something that talks about student quarantine numbers and staff quarantine numbers. And I guess it kind of speaks to what you were, were just talking about in terms of a sports team, whether that's 10 kids or if it's something smaller plus siblings, trying to evaluate those numbers as well. And I know our dashboard tells us how many kids are positive, but we may want to consider what other districts are doing, which is saying is putting that data out for families as well. How many students are quarantining and how many staff are quarantining each week too?
Yeah, I haven't been, I mean, the nurses must collect that data. I have not personally collected that data just because it's, it's a little misleading only because some of it is based on a travel. So they're not technically a close contact. So to try to really dig down into the reason for the quarantine. We also have cases where we have identified close contacts at school. For example, with our staff, we've told people who is a close contact and who is not. And then they choose to quarantine anyhow. They call their doctor and the doctor always says, yes, get tested. So if they weren't a close contact, they did not have to quarantine. So it's, it's a, it's a real confusing number and I think it's inflated. So I'm not really sure how to accurately portray who should be home and who doesn't have to be home. But certainly open to thinking about how to process that and share that.
I think that's a great point and I'd love to hear what Lynn thinks about it too. If, I mean, because she's probably, or, or the school nurses think about it because they're probably have a better assessment of who, how many are quarantining and for what reasons and whether it would be deceptive. So, so I'll, I'll pull that request back and maybe we could get more information on it and think about it.
Sure.
So I know, and I, I support planning for the worst case scenario. But I also would like to, like, look at the other side also, you know, so if we, if we started vaccinating in February and by the end of March, all of our teachers who want to be or vaccinated, things could get better, right? And so I'm wondering if, if conversations have started about planning to move to the three feet model. You know, I know that there's some towns that have already done it. There's some towns that are thinking about it. And I, and I totally recognize that that's, this takes a really long time to think about and put in place logistically. So I was hoping that not necessarily tonight, but that those conversations are happening and that we can start talking about what it looks like when we start to come out of this. When, when, you know, when people are vaccinated and people are more comfortable. It, we don't know when that's going to happen. And so if we can talk about when those, when those plans will be, you know, ready to go or what that would look like.
Yes. And actually, some of the neighboring communities, we are meeting superintendents next week to have that, to start that conversation because that is the ultimate goal. And I mean, I, I, I think realistically, we're very excited about the prospect for the fall. But if we can do something sooner, we want to keep all those options open and, and all the thought process. And you'll hear some of our principals already are bringing back students five days a week, just within our existing model. Because people have opted out, for example, maybe they opted out to remote, even though they were hybrid. So they're bringing more kids in. I, I've encouraged all the principals, if you have space in your rooms right now, bring as many kids back five days a week as possible, even in the hybrid model. So we're transitioning all of that as we go. And I'm hopeful that we can come up with a plan with some of the neighboring communities to get more, you know, more aggressive with that thinking. And hopefully it could happen sooner than the fall as well. So that's certainly an optimistic conversation that should and will happen very near future.
Great. Thank you.
That you and I had, it's almost like Catherine read my mind. I literally was going to say, can we, can we take a minute before we talk about the calendar? Can we talk about future plans, but immediate future plans? So I shared with you some questions about, you know, there were things like the newspaper club at, at Miller. There were things that didn't necessarily need to be in person per se. Were there more opportunities for more connections for the kids as we, you know, start to plow through the, the winter and move towards the spring? Was there any discussion or any thoughts there?
Yeah. So I talked to Matt Baker recently about whether we would offer middle school winter sports. Cause I know that was asked about. He's meeting with the ADs and the league to find out what they're doing. He is hopeful that we could offer some middle school sports, at least if they're outside, obviously. I mean, that gives us a lot more flexibility. And I did ask him to consider if we could not offer winter sports based on what the communities around us are offering, even just to do intramural sports with our own students, that would be certainly something productive and healthy for them as well. So he has that conversation started with his group and will circle back. And then I did ask the high school what their offerings have been. I think Peter can speak to that a little bit. But certainly the high school has kept their enrichment offerings after school virtually, as well as the middle school. And I talked with our elementary, more at Miller, grade three to five, whether we want to consider some options at Miller. Even if they're done virtually, there could be packets of materials that were sent home. So Dave is looking into that as well and seeing if he has an opportunity. Peter, did you have some of that information about the specific clubs that we're running?
Yeah. I mean, we have 30 clubs at the high school that are running. You know, most all of the, the clubs that typically run are running virtually. And then at the middle school, we have 15 clubs. So it's, it's a little bit smaller than typical, but still a large number of clubs. I have the names of them if you, if you want them. But yeah, they're, they're, they're all running, you know, many clubs are kind of at, at typical capacity and some are a little bit below. But it's definitely a, a, a large group of students and definitely opportunities for students to engage in, in their interests and passions at the middle school and high school. And as Dr. Cuska mentioned, yeah, Dave, Dave Khan is looking into the possibilities of, of clubs at the, at Miller as well.
As long as we can, you know, keep that on the horizon and, you know, just in the minds where we're getting right into the winter and this is a tough time of year, non-COVID. So to sort of see a light at the end of the tunnel would be excellent. Dawn?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for looking into the clubs and activities that are going on. I think it might be helpful to get a real idea about the participation rates and whether they've dropped significantly in terms of the middle school. The only other thing I wanted to flag is at the middle school, there used to be a very robust drama program. And I know we've been very successful at the high school in continuing to put on plays, kids writing plays and putting on one act plays. This spring musical didn't happen last year and the one acts at the middle school didn't happen. And usually kids are trying out for the spring musical in December at the middle school. So that's just one of those areas that I think, you know, that the kids are eager to participate in. And we've seen it done at the high school level. So it, it can be done remotely. And that's an important group of kids that we need to reach out to. I think, I thought it was really interesting when Kelly Camp talked about the data from the mood check, which was, happened to be that same grade from November 2019 and May 2020 and how hard hit some of our girls were and how they identified exercise as something that helped to abate some of those, the, the social emotional impact, the anxiety and stress they're feeling. So please continue to keep that in mind. We weren't able to offer fall middle school sports to, so to the degree that we can for the spring and the winter. I think that's really important. We used to have as one of the clubs, a dodgeball. And kids love dodgeball through the winter or pickup basketball through the winter. They could do dodgeball outside. We ran a robust volleyball program in the fall in middle school in the, in the prior years. We could set up volleyball nets outside for the spring. So to, to the degree that we can, and I think that's a great idea, Susan, even if it's not against other schools, just setting up our own intramural programs within the schools are really important. I'd love to know, and I know we're coming to another time that kids can switch or families can switch. But what is the percentage of remote kids in each school? And how has that changed since we've returned in January? Have we seen a shift towards more remote kids? Like what, what's the net?
I don't have the actual numbers, but we did have that conversation. I know the high school had increased the most. And I believe they're up about 30% requesting remote at this point. We also have some students self-selecting on a day that they're supposed to be in person to then stay home remote. So it's throwing off our numbers in that respect. So we are going to have to ask people if you're choosing to remote and don't have a medical or a quarantine reason to do so. More of, I didn't want to get up out of bed today, so I'm going to choose to sleep in and go remote. That's not the reason for remote. So those kinds of questions are starting to happen as to if you're self choosing to give up your seat more often than not. if you're self choosing to give up your seat more often than not in the hybrid model, then we may have to find and give that seat to somebody else. We're looking at that data. We definitely have seen an increase in the grade eight through twelve numbers that they're selecting and opting into the remote for various reasons. Honestly, some of it is convenience. I mean, um, I think some of our students also want to connect in person in school, but maybe not three days a week, on a week that they can come in three days. They, they feel like they could connect one day and it's enough. So there's a lot of various reasons that I did ask the principals to see if they can figure out what the actual reasons are for the increase. But it is seeming to be a, something that we're seeing not just in Holliston, but in upper grades in general, that the option to be remote and the convenience of it sometimes outweighs the desire to be in person. It definitely has shown an increase at, at both middle school and high school, but I would say our K three numbers are staying um pretty significantly, I, I'd say they're consistent, Peter. I haven't heard much change in the opting into remote there. And I think in the grade four to five as well.
Yeah, there was a little shift um that first kind of uh time. So I think there's been a little growth over the year at the elementary, but not uh, not significant.
Are there any changes to um transportation opportunities? Because you had mentioned, and I happen to be a recipient of a, an opportunity. I got the survey from the middle school to if I wanted to send my children all five days. Is there opportunity for the buses as well?
Uh, I think one of our challenges is going to be, um, because again, even whether we change to a three foot model, whether we're having more kids go five days, there will be a challenge with regards to having we, I mean, we have a hard cap on the number of children on a bus. So, you know, twenty-five or twenty-six, depending on whether there's a, a monitor on it. We don't have monitors right now in too many buses. So that's still a hard cap and some of our buses are fuller than others. I mean, there's, that's, that's a fact. Some of them are very empty. So some of it may depend on the route we're on and I'm not sure how we truthfully handle a situation where somebody's entitled at the lower grades, um entitled to free transportation. I, if we have, if, if they're entitled to free transportation, I have to give them priority and I, I, I'm not sure if that means I have to kick someone off if we're over twenty-six or I have to hire another bus at, you know, thirty grand. So it's, it's, we, it's, that's an evolving piece that we're going to have to balance out and figure out what it all means. The other piece of it is going to be, um, and I know, and I, he's only talking about transportation. There's the outstanding question with regards to if we did do something in middle school sports, I did talk to Matt Baker about this, that we don't necessarily have any buses that would be available. Normally, we're able to lop off because when the, the, the timing of the school day with the high school, middle school being in the middle and no difference in number of buses between high school, middle school and the elementary, I don't have a built-in three buses to have them scoot someplace close before coming back to do the late bus run. You know, so buses for the, for a middle school run, if they needed buses. Um, and if anybody knows like the middle school track team and they have a co places, they're packing two or three buses to the brim, not just twenty-five kids on a bus. So there will be challenges there going forward. That, I'm not saying that means we don't do it. It just means parents may have to be more involved, so.
Dawn?
I wanted to bring up, um, because I think this is an issue of concern for some of the sophomores, juniors and seniors. The S A Ts, the P S A Ts, in the past, Holliston has hosted those. We obviously have not, um, since we, there are other schools that are planning to host in the spring. Now that may change. But what we're doing essentially is sending two hundred or more of our students into a variety of other schools with other students. Can we have it here? Is it too late? Can we, and, and we have kids that, um, there's a lot of kids that need to take it, that weren't able to take it from March of last year through now. Um, and, and we don't know when they will again. So they might even be interested in something that we haven't done before, which is to offer it in July or August. I think the A C Ts and the S C Ts are offered at various points, but is there an opportunity for us to host one of those tests again? And I think it could be helpful. We wouldn't be sending two or three hundred of our stu-, our, our students out to a number of other schools um to take the tests.
We, um, I've got information on that. We, uh, we are currently planning to have P S A Ts um here, um, as well as the A Ps. With S A Ts, we, we um we're not able to control it so that that's one test that would be other schools and typically a third of the students are from Holliston, like two thirds are from other districts. So we're not able to control um that portion. Uh, in addition, um, our testing proctors tend to be retired uh teachers and we have not been able to secure enough proctors to do it, even if um we decided that safety wise, it was wise. We do, we do, are supporting students in knowing about testing sites in the area, though, though, as you said, there was very, very little testing that went on in the fall anywhere. There are some uh districts in the area that are um looking to do some Saturday tests and we're supporting students with that. And in addition, there's a, a large number of students um who might not be doing the test at all, but the schools um have, you know, pretty much all schools, except for a couple real anomalies have um declared um S A Ts test optional for next year and the year after. And some are announcing for two thousand twenty-three as well. We had a hundred and fifty uh colleges and universities um connected with us in the fall and all, you know, really de-emphasize the need for S A Ts in these years, understanding that, you know, it's not going to be an equitable playing field and that the other um factors such as um you know, essays and, and, and recommendations are really what they're looking uh for in this round. And that thus far, kids applying have been, you know, doing exceptionally well as typical um in their acceptances. So we will have P S A Ts uh and it, and we can control that. That will be just Holliston. We will have uh A Ps, though information on A Ps is still coming out. Right now it's scheduled for uh May, but there could be some shifts um allowing for um online testing because of still the great discrepancies throughout the country about kids being able to do it in person. Right now we're planning to have in-person A Ps in, in May.
Lisa?
So I'm dragging the conversation backwards, but so this is the first time that I've heard about the three foot distancing. And I've been letting that swim around in my head for the last ten minutes. I is, is there research to support the three foot social distancing? I'm just surprised that we're even talking about that, given the new more contagious variants. And I just wanted to get a little more information on that because it's the first I'm hearing of, of any move towards a three foot distancing.
Well, there are some districts um in private schools and some charter schools that are already at three to four, some of them three to four feet and have um full in person. So it, it is happening in the state. When Desi came out with their guidance in June and then later as well, the recommendation was six foot social distancing with a minimum of three feet. So they've never said no to three feet. We chose the six feet as well as a number of other districts because that was what the CDC has said as well as the safe distance. If the vaccination is in place and more students get vaccinated, it is very likely that the state will go to three feet. That may not be till the fall, but they are encouraging us to consider that. And that's why we're starting to have conversations now, because if, if things improve, we want to be able to slide into a different model as soon as possible. So three foot has always been part of the initial guidance and ongoing discussion, but many districts like ours chose not to consider the three foot.
We're not talking about that for the spring, correct?
Not necessarily. Unless something changes drastically, I, I just, anything is being, every option is being discussed. Whether we could get there is, the likelihood of that is not as strong, but I do think for the fall, that is a very strong possibility.
It just seems like I, I would definitely have concerns. I would want a fuller discussion if we were going to consider it in the spring because I think that, you know, we know our kids are not going to be vaccinated this spring because they haven't even started trials yet on the under sixteen year old set and we don't, with all the more contagious variants in particular, you know, the idea that we could have asymptomatic kids bringing it home to all of us parents is a little scary. So I think that's something that I, I just want to, I think we should have a fuller conversation if, if we do decide to consider it for the spring.
Yeah, if we were even considering that at all, that would come back to the school committee for a vote because that's part of our reopening plan. And also that is part of our safety plan that we negotiated and um, you know, the safety guidance that we put into place. So we would have to bring that back to our union members as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I remember listening in um Kelly Camp's presentation about use of an academic intervention block for six week periods, and I thought that was great. And then she talked about the COVID compensatory services. Sure, by now we've had a lot of opportunities to assess all of our students. Do we have remediation plans for students beyond just students on I E Ps? Something similar like the COVID compensatory services. And here's, here's where my concern lies. I understand with our high school instruction, while we did reduce instruction time, we're still up to something like uh five and a half or six hours each, each day. The middle school, it's a little bit less. It's more like three and a half to four and a half hours. We have asynchronous blocks that are anywhere from two and a half to four, four and a half hours each week. There's just an asynchronous block. Is that an opportunity to have some type of COVID compensatory services remediation work for all our students beyond just I E P? And we also had robust discussions in September and again in October about the implementation in January um or soon thereafter of bringing back I E P or, or not I, I P S, I'm sorry. For some of our eighth grade students, what are we doing to look at better use of the, the two and a half to four and a half hours of asynchronous learning that our middle school still has each week?
I, I could, I'll talk first to the um, those intervention blocks, those, there's those six, you know, five to six week intervention uh periods for both academic or social emotional. Those are actually geared as much towards uh non-special education students as, as special education students. Special education students typically, you know, within their, you know, within the way that their um I E Ps are being met, you know, have a liaison, are being monitored on a regular basis, are doing things in order to to support their needs. And yeah, sure, there are times when we need additional services. Um, and so that could come, come about. But tho- those intervention blocks in that monitoring is really, again, is capturing kids additionally and perhaps even more exclusively who are not on I E Ps. So what um, you know, teachers are uh identifying kids who are struggling, trying to go through a process of analysis based upon data about why they're struggling and what might be the root causes and then coming up with interventions, uh whether they be small group or individual that will help them to overcome. They go through a five or six week period and if they're showing improvements, then they would come off that, that intervention block. If not, they might extend beyond. Uh, so that was really geared towards, you know, um, all kids. With respect to I P S, we've been really struggling with, with that. We had a, a hope and plan in place to, to start doing some of that during the block after um, you know, the, the main part of the day during that asynchronous time. Uh, and we ju-, we haven't been able to secure staffing for it. I think our teachers love the idea and would love to step up and just don't feel the ability to, with uh all the work that they're doing in order to, you know, kind of put together uh this hybrid environment where kids are being educated both in person and at home at the same time um and revamping their entire curriculum. So that's what we've been struggling with is, is um staffing for, for that. And so we're, we're kind of still hoping, but that, that's where, really where it fell down. And again, I, I, teachers I think would love to be saying yes, and I think they're just being realistic about their capacity right now.
Peter, it's just, just a suggestion. I, you know, I was looking over because it's going to be that time soon, the high school curriculum and the courses that were offered. And I think for some of our older kids, maybe eleventh or twelfth, there's even a level of online classes that are offered. Maybe what could a solution be? Are there on, are there online classes offered to middle school kids? And again, it doesn't have to be just giving these kids the information and the opportunity to sign up for something like that, that might help, help with it too. I, there are, there are schools like um MIT runs something where it's twenty-five or forty dollars and kids can take classes for six to eight weeks on a Saturday and all types of different um topics. Again, that's a Saturday and it costs money, so we might have to find a way like if the P T O or someone can help out with it, but there may be some type of online classes that we might be able to provide information on. Um, just something to consider.
Yeah, uh, we could definitely explore that. I'll reach out also my, also to my colleagues in the region about um o- opportunities as well that they might be pursuing that are unique and enrichment oriented.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Peter, for that. Um, so I would like to um just move the conversation only because it's ten past nine and you know, how will we get after nine o'clock? And I don't want to move the calendar conversation yet again. But it's good conversation that we're having and, you know, Susan and I have chatted and she um she will keep updating us, you know, every uh meeting, we will have more conversation about what we're doing to keep moving forward. You know, like they say, baby steps, so. We, you know, we appreciate what's going on and, and all the work that, that everyone's doing. Dawn?
There is one other thing I wanted to bring up and it's related to um the topic we're still on. And we addressed it last time with athletics, but I think we were all, we all saw emails from um winter sports parents advocating for um senior parents to be able to watch a game or some of the games. And I just wanted to, I think, I think we should have that conversation. I know we talked about winter sports last time, but I'm not sure that as a committee, we really talked about and asked questions about it. And here's just my, I, 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 I think it's different and distinct, some of these sports are different and distinguishable, right? We have home games at Loring Arena. There's Plexiglas. It's a separate and apart area. We are allowing someone to come in and videotape. And then if you've watched it, like I had, I was able to watch part of the varsity and the, I think it was, I think it was freshman, it might have been J V, boys basketball, part of the hockey and someone is sportscasting and someone is videotaping. Is there any opportunity here to let senior parents be the person in sportscasting and videotaping? And, and we have had parents do that before. I think um uh Drohan has done soccer over the years when they're sportscasting. So I'm just, I'm bringing it up because a number of parents did reach out to us. And in fairness, I think it should be something to discuss.
Honestly, I don't think there's any discussion. At this point, we're in a global pandemic and I don't think it's fair to say, we're going to make an exception for you. We're going to make an exception for you. We're going to make an exception for you. And quite honestly, and I'm sorry that I sound rude and obnoxious and witchy, whatever you want to call me, the parents have been part of the problem. And there is a reason why the high school was shut down for five days. It's because parents let the congregating happen in many cases. I think we're going to go down the wrong path of, but you let me go and you let her go and what about me? I think we need to stick to our guns. No spectators until situation seems safer. But at this point, why is it okay to say yes to hockey and no to basketball and yes to gymnastics and no to soccer? Like I, I just, this is kind of like your kids. You love them all the same and at this point, you got to treat them all the same. I think we're in a global pandemic. That's my opinion. Anybody else?
I'm not interested in entertaining it. I think that um the very fact that we have sports going at all is, is certainly a testament to the, the hard work and the, the planning that we've had um in place. And um, I'm not, I'm not interested in opening it up to further, um, further risk of the athletes and for our, really further for the schools. So I'm not, I'm not interested in entertaining um fans. So I'm not, I'm not interested in entertaining, um, fans.
I'm not either. Just given the fact that we've got two, uh, teams that are quarantining right now. Uh, I think that shows that we're already having, struggling with just trying to keep sports open on their own. So this is really about the kids. I have a senior too. I get it. We're all, we're all having to make a lot of concessions for so much and it's not going to get better. It's going to get worse right now. So we all have to buckle in on this and it sucks, but it is what it is. I hate to say that.
Lisa?
Yeah, super sympathetic to the parents. I feel terrible for them, especially the senior parents. And I think this is a, they're, I think it's a valid point that they're making. But I think that at this point, we are so lucky to be able to do sports that I think that the compromise that we are making in terms of saying no spectators is a reasonable one, unfortunately. And I do think if we start looking at, you know, making exceptions for certain sports, it's going to be, it's going to just open it up to a whole lot of, um, questions from parents. And, you know, although in a perfect world, it would be nice if we could come up with something. I do think that we have to draw a line in the sand somewhere. Unfortunately, I just, I think this is where we have to draw it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm on a similar page. I, I feel like we'd be opening a Pandora's box of more requests and more, um, I, I think the equity issue is what gets me, um, most worried or concerned that, that having to differentiate between which parents can come and which can't and which sports can and which can't. I think that, um, I think it's only fair if we're fair and equal to everyone. Um, and I don't, I, I know that in the, in the past seasons, that there have been issues with compliance, um, on the parental end. And, and it's all, sports are already in jeopardy. And I feel like if we have more people in the building, we're just going to increase the, the percentage chance that there could be transmission in places where there already is transmission or could be transmission.
It's, I get it. It stinks, but it's a global pandemic and, uh, you know, we're all missing out on milestones and, you know. But we shall get through this roller coaster of craziness. All right, let's move on to the calendar. Um, I have one, where, uh, can't speak, one clarifying question. The opening day, should it say opening day for staff? Because I believe all staff attend on the first day. Is that an accurate statement? So can we change that?
Yeah, yeah, we can. I, I think we've al- I think it's always said that, but I think you're correct that it should.
I know we've, we've drafted and redrafted, so.
Yeah, because I think Lisa just, you, you used previous stuff things, but I agree.
Okay, so August 30th would be opening day for staff. So I guess I want to take a step back philosophically. So this calendar, this draft three is very, um, similar to what we have traditionally always done, uh, with some, you know, changes, updates to PD either being full day or half day. Personally, I think because we're in this global pandemic, it makes sense to follow this path of continuity on how we've done the school year calendar. I'm not sure I'm ready to engage in a conversation of philosophically changing the school year calendar, but I'm asking for the committee to weigh in on this. Cynthia?
So, um, my question is more about, um, was actually not just about the holidays where we have Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day. So can, can we just leave it as Indigenous Peoples' Day? Or do we have to say Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day? I know we, I feel like we've had this conversation before, but I thought it was around contracts. And since we are doing every single contract in the district right now, like I don't see any reason why we can't just change it to Indigenous Peoples' Day in the new contracts? Or is that a bone of contention with anyone?
It's not a bone of contention, but that we do, we have not signed a contract with, um, the teachers. So we have not changed it in their, their contract. So that's one group that I wouldn't be comfortable changing this yet. I think it'll change, I, it, but I also, I know there's been discussion that we can write whatever we want because it's our calendar, but I do think we need to match up with contract language. So I think it's a, it's not here yet, but could change, you know, before school even starts. But philosophically, thoughts?
Oh. Philosophically, I, I'm not sure that it's the time to kind of upset the apple cart as we've made a lot of changes. We've gone through, we're going, going through a hard year. It would be nice to be able to start off our next year like fresh in some way, shape or form.
Yeah.
And I know we, at one point we talked about whether we would want to start earlier in the, in the calendar year. And my thoughts with, with hearing about the vaccine. If the vaccine gets rolled out to students, we're more likely to get more students vaccinated by not starting earlier and also giving teachers time to adjust because it's been a very challenging year and will continue to be so. So that would be a reason for sticking with the typical schedule that we're doing in the past years. Just in the hope that we'll get more vaccinated if we start in the normal calendar year.
Well, and also if we're considering doing an ESY calendar that is more aggressive than we typically would do, um, to try to mitigate some of those issues leading into the next year, I think, yeah. And our teachers are going to need a break too.
Any other questions about any of the days or anything? Because if not, I would totally entertain a motion to approve this draft number three.
Moved by Cynthia.
Second by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. All in favor? Roll call vote. Um, and it's, I'm sorry, approve this with the change of August 30th to say opening day for staff, just to be clear. Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn. Roll call vote. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Ms. Noworski?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes, thank you all. So we can please post this tomorrow, Dr. Cuska, so people, people have been asking me the, the first day of school for 2021. So, um, if we could post the final calendar, that would be great. Thank you all.
All right, I lost my agenda. Hold on. Um, okay, Peter. The 15th was a professional development day.
Yes, it was and, and a great one. Um, Miami, no. Yeah, so we, uh, these days have been incredibly important, um, especially this year. Uh, so the elementary, they really, you know, spent as they have been throughout the year, spent a portion of the day focused on making this great shift from, um, you know, pro, uh, a, a literacy approach that really kind of went through a prescriptive program and reading streak to this, uh, workshop approach. So they worked closely with Cynthia Merrill, um, on a couple of key areas to continue to improve their practices. One was around conferring with students in order to assess progress and inform instruction. And they had a, uh, they also had another part was re- really about effective, uh, small group work, especially connected to word work, which is like phonics and word analysis and vocabulary growth. So this work, each of the different grade levels worked with Cynthia. Part of that work, um, some of the teachers had offered to have themselves videotaped in order to show some examples of best practices. So they analyzed those practices and saw what teachers were doing and also what students were doing in order to, um, confer and, and also, um, do this word work in, in small groups. And those videotapes are really useful for teachers to kind of reflect upon practice and be able to, um, envision how they could implement in their classroom in even more effective ways. All this work in the literacy as well as everything that we've done in professional development has had this bridge to, you know, yeah, how, what does this look like in a typical year? But also especially what does it look like in this, in this hybrid environment or at the early elementary? What does it look like in an environment where you might have half of your kids in one classroom and the other half in the other classroom, as you're spreading them across, uh, two classrooms, uh, you know, at six foot distance? So, you know, we've had to make that reflective part has been part of all of our work in professional development as well as, you know, just in regular, um, meetings. How do we kind of make this application to a really unique, um, en- environment this year? In addition to the literacy focused work, um, uh, we, we've kind of continued to build upon, um, some professional development around best practices and hybrid and, and remote learning. This has really had a large focus on technology integration, but not always just that. You know, and also at the elementary, again, at that, uh, pre-K through C level might be, how do you, um, do a split classroom effectively? But they have built on some of the technology integration tools, whether it be clever or seesaw or pair deck or good guardian, some of the things that teachers presented at, in their, um, those, the goals, uh, or the administrators presented in their goals. In addition to their, you know, the focus work on literacy and technology integration, we also had a bunch of other specialized groups in, at the, at Nolan Placentito, who were working, um, to, um, PD that was really targeted towards their needs. And that's included in the memo. I'm not going to go over, uh, all of them. I'll give you a couple of highlights. In, in social studies, they were really looking at how did they adapt, uh, social studies and writing, writing units for hybrid and remote learning. In math in grade three and four, they were looking at revising assessments and also, um, how to adapt and vision to online instruction. The student, uh, speech and language pathologists at the elementary and OTs, uh, went to a virtual summit, uh, which, in which they could, um, you know, um, engage in, in workshops on teletherapy interventions, ethics, transgender cultural responsiveness, um, stuttering, all these different great topics that they could, uh, choose from. And so there's a lot of great professional development, uh, in specialized areas as well. At the middle school, there was a heavy emphasis on, you know, building upon some of the other previous professional development days. Uh, there's this, this kind of like review, reflect and revise was kind of the theme of the day. It started with, um, a session altogether where they reviewed some of the key resources in PD from, uh, previous days, whether that be strategies for struggling learners, including trauma informed strategies, some of the tech and media, uh, uh, social media tools, some of the work around examining bias, um, and microaggressions. And so there's a dump, a bunch of topics that they kind of dug back into to reflect and kind of to bring back to their, the forefront of their minds. Then teachers had opportunities to attend a, a number of sessions, uh, a kind of a follow-up session on examining bias. Some sessions, um, really around some of those interventions that are being, that we've been talking about. So some of the leaders like Brooke Dory, who's the intervention specialist at the, uh, elementary school, along with Jess Beatty, our assistant principal, led some groups on those interventions or what are some of the practices that are being used? In doing so, they were also tr- building the toolkit of, um, general education teachers to infuse some of that into their tier one instruction, uh, for all kids. Because in some cases, um, you know, that is sufficient to really help kids to, um, you know, be able to be more successful. And in some kids, they're going to need these small group interventions in order to be successful. So that work was really important at the middle school. And again, then the, the last part of the day, they really took all of the information from these sessions in order to work together to think about the second half of the year and how do they continue to adapt instruction and units for this hybrid and remote learning environment with all of these factors in mind? So it's been, it was a, a, a great day at the middle school. The high school began with a really, a great session led by, uh, Karen Archimbo. I, I've really enjoyed working with her this year. She is a, a fantastic new addition to the Holliston community. She is, um, you know, passionate and very, um, and has a lot of skill and expertise in areas of, uh, da- data, but also in equity work. And so she led a session on equity and social justice in the classroom. This built on a session that was provided, um, back in Oct- on, in September. And also some mini sessions that have been built into PD and faculty meetings throughout the, throughout the first half of the year. And so that session, which really dug into issues of implicit bias, microaggressions and how to facilitate just difficult conversations about race and equity, was kind of grounded, uh, the high school faculty in the fir- first part of the day. So it, it was a session that was really, um, you know, well presented, um, though it was interactive. So she, she makes sure that she really does some interactive work. She worked with me today with our new equity and anti-bias team in an interactive session that she did a great job of, you know, facilitating a lot of it. And it was a, a, a great, uh, start for that group to kind of develop some, um, you know, to kind of get to know each other, develop some trust and start to dig into the important issues related to that work. The second part of the day was similar to the middle school, like the, the high school was kind of revisiting some sessions from previous in the year and also kind of working in interdisciplinary groups in order to really think about what, what have we learned, um, thus far? What can we pull from the resources, uh, both in the morning and in previous PD days in order to really think about how can we make the second half of the year, uh, better because of what we've learned, um, uh, in the first half. And so there's a lot of work in, in small, uh, groups with course partners in order to uh, apply their learning, um, to, you know, better, um, instruction in this really complex hybrid, uh, mode that the high school teachers are doing. They're doing a, a fabulous job, but it's challenging and, and it's also something that continues to need that reflection and revision in order to continue to, to make it more effective. So that was what the high school dug into as well. As well as the high school councils had some specialized groups around topics of executive functioning, social emotional programming and, um, also participated in a middle ship, middle sex partnership for youth, virtual training, um, that they dug into as well. So all in all, again, it was a great day. We just started to review the, um, the, uh, the survey feedback, um, and we'll be doing that with the PD council next week. We do that together after, uh, PD days, um, look at that work. That PD council is made up, as you remember, um, administrators and teachers, um, representatives. And we look at that to, to continue to, um, figure out how we can improve each day. And, and these days we're heavily influenced by previous surveys, which have had really positive reviews, um, thus far this year.
Thank you. Questions? Lisa?
Yeah, just a quick, um, thank you. And, um, thank you in particular for, Peter, for the, um, professional development around equity, since you and I have sat in on a few meetings with diverse Holliston, um, in the last year. I know that that's something they'll really appreciate that that is ongoing. So just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Keith, can you share out the warrants that were signed today?
Sure. Um, I have, I have seven school bill warrants. I'm going to go, go into them in painstakingly, painstakingly detail. So get out your pillows. Seven warrants. Here we go. Um, we have a school bill warrant, the amount of $230,470.18, of which $1,192.18 was attached to COVID. A school bill warrant, the amount of $224,877.46, of which $3,644.50 is attached to COVID. A school bill warrant, the amount of $193,292.43, of which $32,284.48 is attached to COVID. School bill warrant, the amount of $506,576.55, of which $13,612.40 is attached to COVID. A school bill warrant, the amount of $80,892.67, of which $23,966.17 is attached to COVID. A school bill warrant, the amount of $122,624.40 of which uh, $1,622.69 is attributed to COVID. And the final school bill warrant is in the amount of $78,316.98 of which $1,779 is attached to COVID. I also have two cafeteria bill warrants, one in the amount of $16,214.11 and another in the amount of $13,747.44 of which $299.07 is attributed to COVID. I don't know the COVID amounts, Cynthia. Thank you.
Um, Keith, I do have a question. Do you have any sense? Um, and you can answer this at the next meeting because I I just thought, thought of this. Do you have a sense of, is there an increase or decrease or trend in um free lunches that are in lunch, that the lunch program are, are people? People taking um advantage of it? Are they not? Do we need to do a PSA?
We, I mean, all lunches are free. So there is no, you know, the, the idea of the free and reduced days are at least over for this year. We, we have not seen, at least we haven't, I don't have a January report yet. Um, actually I don't have, do I have December? I don't have a, I don't think I've seen December's report through, through November. You know, again, it was a fairly consistent amount of lunches. You know, again, people are grabbing you where they're not. I mean, it's, it's difficult because some kids are, some of the students are just anxious to get out. Some are um a little more reluctant to leave or not as, you know, uh, uh quick to the, to the blowing out of the building. But um, I mean, it, I, you know, I, I think we can possibly you know, maybe in one of Susan's Fridays thing, just reminding everybody that lunch is free, please feel that you can partake in it. Just because again, it's the only stream of revenue we have for the lunch program right now. And if they don't take it, I'm not, I'm, can't cover the payroll to make those lunches that aren't getting taken. So but um, you know, so.
Where is the food? Where is the food going if people aren't taking it? It's getting thrown out?
Well, ye- yes. Um, ye- yes. Uh, we do have a program, one of the groups that, a group that didn't come forward last week. When uh, when we were seeing the service learning projects. One of the groups has been working with me. They're, they're putting up a composting station behind the, the dumpster that is closest to the art room. And um, my guess is that stuff may end up over there. Um, so.
Are we not allowed to give those to like the food pantry or the senior center or anything like that?
Correct.
Correct. So wasteful.
Keith, if you give me a little snippet, I'll add that as one of my
Certainly.
reminders.
Will do.
I guess the issue is like, how do you get the, so personally, I see it, my children will not take a lunch. And my husband, I, I, every day, don't forget to ask for lunch today. And my kids are too cool not get, taking a lunch. They're like, I'm not going to eat it. And so how, I'm pretty sure I'm not the only, what?
Leave them at school. If they don't have a lunch bag, you don't take them home.
They have them near the door. So I know at the high school, the kids can grab them on their way out. And some of the kids have told me that they're quite good and, and you know, are yeah, so if you try them, they'll find out. They have to try them to realize that they have offerings.
My kid's been taking them and my kids, I, I always have made them lunch and they've been enjoying the surprise of what they get on a daily basis. Um, also just for the high school students, if you're like late, you know, if you're leaving late, like my daughter's a doddler, she just walks down to the, the cafeteria and they hand her ones because they, they bring them back from wherever the, the, you know, exit doors are. And then they are like, here, take three, take four. And she's like, well, I don't have that many, but my brother should probably get a pizza.
And it doesn't have to be a surprise, Cynthia, because there is a lunch.
I know. It's just, I don't tell them. I, I have it posted. It's not like my kids are looking at what the lunch is for the day, every day. They just don't. So, but I do have it printed. So I could know, but I, you know, it doesn't matter to them. They don't care. They're, they're choosing to, you know, grab what they've got. And then they go, ooh, look at this. Every day. And, and email, because I'll say that much.
Well, if anyone has ideas, I just, I just think that I'm pretty sure my kids aren't the only ones who are doing this. I'm too cool to carry out a lunch bag or whatever. But I, I think it just, it bothers me that there's waste and it bothers me that there's revenue law, you know, like we need those people. We want those jobs to remain. So it would be us to people, take the lunch, Catherine?
Does it have to be the lunches? Or I mean, I know that just snacks just started recently. Can we, can we siphon the food that way? So my kids won't eat the lunch because they're just obnoxiously picky, but they're big on the smart food and they're super happy when the, when the fishies show up. So like, I didn't know if there was like another way we can have food move through the school in a, in a in another option.
Let me find out, let me find out from the uh, let me find out from Susan Polfski, the, the food service director. What happens with the um snack piece with regards to revenue first off? And second off, is there a better way, is there a good way for us to uh make that available? So.
Yeah, because the lunches themselves have to be put forth as a full lunch. We can't separate those pieces or then you don't get credit as well, which is.
Right.
Oh, okay. So that's what I was asking. I didn't know if we could just buy a lot more snacks instead of the.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you were saying there was a separate snack.
There is, but it's put in the bag with the lunch.
Okay.
So they're providing you a snack and a lunch.
Okay.
Each time, so.
So we're getting, we're probably getting a charge for that. But yeah, no, we can't just give you a bag of snacks.
No.
That's not reimbursable.
No.
I would eat a bag of smart food.
Well, no, 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 I just can't, we can't, I'm no revenue coming in. That's, that's, that's the worst case scenario. You take the food and we get nothing out of it. So.
Yeah.
No smart food.
If anyone comes up with a great idea, I mean, my chickens will eat the damn lunch. It's just, I, I just hate that there's waste.
Wait, wait, what lunch? You just said how good it was.
No, I'm saying.
Is if you're going to throw it out, her chickens eat it too. And she just.
I just, I'm concerned about the waste. It bothers me that there's like.
Tell your kids to bring it home for the chickens.
All right, okay. With that being said, um, our next meeting is February 4th. Um, we will have the second um reading of policy on immunizations, J L C B. We will have our regular COVID update. And maybe the budget subcommittee will have a little bit of an update or maybe.
Stacy, meeting? Sorry, policy isn't until after that. So I don't know if we're gonna, I mean, we can do a second reading, but we won't have met until the next, do you know what I mean? We don't have a meeting until the ninth, so.
But we don't need to make any changes.
Well, okay. We did have to ask something about that Andy requested.
All right.
Sorry.
All right, well, we'll move it. All right. So we'll move it to the later. Okay. So we won't talk about policy.
Stacy, I think we talked about adding a meeting February, potentially February 11th. When we would discuss potential budget.
Oh, okay.
Possibilities. So we could put it on that one.
Okay.
We want to cancel February 4th? No. Why is, Keith, why are you telling me no?
Because I'd miss all you guys so much. No, the, 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 the challenge, I think, is that as we go into the budget season, every I must say more critical because whether it's taking some other items that could happen during a budget meeting and putting it to there, or we may have some other budget things that we may want to resolve. I, I think it's, I think it'd be premature to cancel it at this point, in my opinion. But I'm not the final purveyor.
I just don't have any agenda items at this point, so that's fine.
We can just talk about budget the entire time.
Good.
It'll be the, it'll be the Keith show along with the budget subcommittee.
We will leave it as is with the COVID update and, and we'll have a budget line item.
That sounds good.
And if, Peter, if there's any um spotlights that we could do for teachers or students, that would be awesome. I mean, I, I can't think of one off the top of my head, but I can just tell you just from listening to my kids talk about what they're doing. There's some amazing learning going on. So if you want to highlight somebody, I would love to um highlight them, you know, at an upcoming meeting, just to throw it out there for you. All right, it is 9:42. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia.
Second by Catherine.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Catherine, all in favor, roll call vote, Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Koshen?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Mrs. Raffi? Yes. Great. It is 9:42. We are now adjourned. Good night, all. Have a nice weekend and we will see you soon.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.